I think we're gonna go ahead and get started. Yes, if people can find their, find their seat. This is wonderful, we're getting our door home. Welcome homecoming. So anyway, so thank you for coming to our November, it's not November, is it? Oh my gosh, not yet. October, October, I was, I was doing the November, um, activities list a few minutes ago. So anyway, so our October, uh, Ned Talk. And, um, usually, you know, we have a presenter come in and they do their PowerPoint. We have a Q and A and everything in it. And it's all, I think, that was very interesting. Uh, but it gets a little, you know, formulaic sometimes. Well, today, no PowerPoint. This is all gonna be talking hands-on. As you can see, we've got quite a lot to look at, um, touch, feel. Um, Constance Weaver, our presenter today. Um, gosh, Constance, I don't even know, we, we met several years back. And, um, she blew me away with her artistic abilities of being able to, how to felt make, remember?
Oh.
A golden cheek warbler for...
A hu- a hu- husband and wife and their nest and their eggs.
Yes, yes, for, for an exhibit. And it was so lifelike. I mean, it was just incredible, uh, craftsmanship.
You still have it?
And, um, Constance has, you know, continued to amaze me over the years. I mean, just with what her capabilities, her, her craftsmanship, and just the things that she does. And she is not only an artisan, but, uh, her knowledge of native plants is, is outrageous. Um, just five minutes of walking through the, uh, nature center property a couple of weeks ago. And she's like, oh, did you know that you could da-da-da-da-da? Oh, over here, did you know you can do this with this? And it was just like, oh my gosh, just, I mean, the, the vast volume of, of information that's in this woman's brain. And it's not just this, but she leads, um, tours and walks for rock art down in, um, Trans Pecos and, and you say...
We work for the, uh, volunteer for the Witty and for Seminole Canyon.
Yeah.
Leading ancient rock art tours.
The white shaman, uh, rock art and everything, so. And one, one other thing that's gonna be fantastic is if you don't get your fill of this today, um, eventually, we're going to get this next exhibit up. And so, Constance has, um, a whole section in about ecosystem services and how, um, our, our ecosystem, um, well, one of the services is cultural. And so, we're gonna be utilizing a lot of her, um, crafts and, and, um, artistry in our next exhibit. So, without further ado, let's turn it over to Constance and get wowed, alright? Thank you.
Okay, thanks. I graduated from the Master Naturalist class in 2019. And we worked on trails with Bob Binney. We built trails out at YMCA Roberts Ranch and Love Creek Nature Conservancy. But when COVID came and we were all stuck at home, I was going nuts. So I taught myself to make baskets. My first attempt is this little bitty tiny one. And, um, it is using agave fibers, which I didn't bring, well, I've got some, but, which are really fine fibers. And it worked. My dog ate the lid, so it's kinda cockeyed. And then this was the second one, which also worked. And then I kinda moved on to this guy and this guy and got bigger and bigger and different types of fibers. And then I decided that I wanted to dye fibers. So, I'm gonna show you, especially you, what you do with Soto to get the fibers for the baskets. So just a minute. Very sticky, I got it this morning. So you, I'm gonna see if this works, if not, I'll use my knife. Wanna get the, um, you want to get all of the spines off because Soto can be really, really mean. So I either use sharp shirt or, yeah, my knife. Which was just sharpened this morning, so it ought to work. So you just, you take it and you run it right down the very edge because you wanna get all the spines off. And then you have clean fibers. And Becky, I'll clean your floor up later. So you just wanna strip them off so that then you can cut the Soto's leaf into the size fibers that you wanna use to make your basket. And you can do it without really hurting yourself, mostly. After a few beers, you could cut yourself. Okay. Okay, one more side and then I'm gonna show you. Because sometimes people don't appreciate Soto because it's so pokey. But it's very useful and Native Americans used it quite a lot for baskets and mats and, um, other things that they needed. And the root of the Soto is edible. We made an earth oven demonstration out at YMCA Roberts Ranch where we did cook Soto in an earth oven. You dig a hole, you put down rocks, you put down cactus pads on the ro- well, first of all, you build a really hot fire. Then you put cactus pads down, then you put the Soto root in there. Cover it up with cactus pads, more rocks, and dirt. Leave it for three days, dig it out, tastes like soapy dirt. Okay, so, huh, did I like it? Did I taste it? It was gross. Okay, so, this is how I make the fibers that I then use to weave the baskets. So you can see, you can make them any width you want. But this is why this is a good thing. And so, you just use it up, you know, I usually use a lot and get these fibers going. And then they spend quite a lot of time in the kitchen sink being soft. And you can ask the chef in our house how he likes that. Okay, so I'm gonna let you all pass these around and have a look. Oops.
So you always do that step one expression, just clapping?
Yes, because it's, it's really, um, flexible. I'll just pass them on two sides. They're real flexible and they do get hard, but then you, all you have to really do is stick them in hot water for a little while. Okay, so the other thing that I use is Torii yucca leaves. And I use those for, I don't think I brought the sandals. Um, anyway, I've made sandals with them, the way the people in the, in the desert southwest would wear. And what you do is you put this on a fire or in an oven and you let it get bright green and real flexible. But first, you cut all the sharp edges off, I'll show you that. And then there's somebody, um, I think her name is Mary Wiki. She's a muggion lady who shows online how you make sandals out of, um, Torii yucca, which is how I learned. Okay, so what I'm doing is I'm getting rid of this really hard, sharp edge. Mostly. And if you'll look, see this sharp point on the end of this Torii yucca? You can use these for needles and threads. You see this? It's real handy. Um, okay. So this morning, I wanted to show you all how to get really good fiber to make cordage from a Torii yucca leaf. Oh, here it is. So I took this out and set it on this leaf, this leaf, and beat the tar out of it on a log on the, to get, to break down all the fibers. Somebody didn't tie that right. No, it's okay. No, no, it's okay. So if you all wanna look at this, you see how fibrous this is? And so what I, I wonder what that is, anyway. So you can separate the fibers out, I'll let y'all pass it around. And you just, what I do is just pull some off like this, bring it down, like that, like that. And then when we're sitting outside and Robert wants to enjoy his afternoon, I'm sitting here scraping stuff off these yucca fibers to be able to make cordage. So, what did you say? You want another beer? Uh-huh, aren't we having fun? Anyway, these make really good fibers. Okay, so, these are examples of the cordage that I make. This is from Cattail. This is from Cattail. And the Cattail, when you remove the leaves from the stalk, have a secret fiber that the Caddo Indians knew about. And it's this very flexible, tiny, little fiber. And it makes awesome cordage and baskets. So I'm gonna let you all pass it around. Trudy's gonna wear one on her head.
Yeah, I like it too.
Well, I'll pass, this is the cordage, it's just...
When you make yours, you shouldn't leave a place for the ponytail to come through.
That's true.
Or you can just put it, there you go, okay.
Constance, that is in the Cattail stalk?
It's where the leaves attach and wrap around the stalk. So you'll pull the leaf off the stalk and in there on one side is this fiber. And the Caddo people used it for all kinds of things. It's really, really strong.
So that would be Indians that move their water?
East Texas. Well, yeah, I got these at Love Creek. But here is some more, just showing you how flexible this, the cordage is.
Would you just twist the cord, you just twist it up to make a cord?
I can show you how I do it. You can look it up online too. Let me see if I have any of that, oh, I passed him around. What?
And you don't have to use those online?
Oh, no. No, I don't. Not I. Okay, let me see if I can find one that would do it. Yeah, here's some. Okay, this is probably gross to you guys, but I use my teeth to hold this in place. Let's see. Okay, so this is Soto. I think this is Soto fiber, okay? So what you do is you start just with a piece, a long piece of fiber. You fold it in half. And that's the start, all the way up here. See this? I mean, I'll pass it around. So what I do is put it in my mouth. You twist opposite ways and then twist it and you make the fiber that way. And that also drives Robert nuts. So, pass it around. Okay, what else? So the baskets that I make with the Soto fibers, they have to have something to keep the coil solid. It has to be wrapped around something. So this, I use Nolena, which is bear grass. Do y'all know which that is? I know Bob...
That's the man who...
It is, so I'll pass, that's what this is. And it's real handy. And when you first cut it, it's real flexible. And if it's not, then you throw it in your sink in hot water and leave it for a couple of days and hope your husband is, you know, happy about it. But anyway, y'all can look, this is, this is Nolena, this is bear grass.
So that's not stripped at all, that's the original, the entire leaf?
It's the full brush.
But you can strip it and you can make real, real, real fine cordage with it by just going down through it two or three times and you get this really fine fiber.
Constance, if you already have brown ones, can you reconstitute that and use them? Or is it kinda too...
Oh, with the Nolena? I think that the green is a little bit more flexible, but if you soak it in water, you, you can probably use it. But I would suggest, I mean, there's some on the roadside near us and I go periodically to visit it. We have it on our property, but you have to walk through poison ivy to get to it. And I can't do that. Okay, where did that thing go? Where's the big long one? Oh, Robert's got it. Huh? Oh, look at you. Thank you. Let me have, I was looking for these. Thanks, thanks. What do, oh, okay, yeah. Okay. So, you all can come up and look or I can pass them around. But, um, these are all differently shaped baskets. This is a completely different one, which is real messy, but I happen to like it anyway because it has a different top to it. You can come up and look. I have rocks in there. But you can just see, you can pretty much do anything. And now we'll talk about dyes. The Riverside Nature Center was quite kind to me in letting me pick up some lichens off the ground because I had thought maybe I could make dye from it. And I can and I did, but I don't know the names of the lichens. But I can say, whatever you do, if you wanna make dye out of lichens, don't pick them off the trees. Either wait until after a storm and pick them up off the ground or off downed branches. Morning is best because they're more pliable in the morning. But these are the different dyes that I have made, just using, um, this lichen. I think it's called Phontelia, but I don't remember right. But it makes a really nice, kind of reddish one. But if you leave it for three months, and this is only about four weeks old, this turns screaming purple. And you, what you wanna do, if you're gonna make a dye, is you put it into something like this, a jar, and you fill it half with water and half with ammonia. And put the lid on and you just set it outside. And periodically, you go shake it, open the lid, let it breathe, stand back in case it, you know, explodes on you. But, so, this has been fun. And then this is a different type of tree lichen, which I thought would make something green or gray. And I accidentally dropped it into a jar that I was gonna put something else in. And it turned kind of a really interesting, kinda yellowy pink. This one, on the other hand, turned real purply pink. And again, it's, it's, it's fun. You can look online, there's a lady named Deb McClintock online who dyes fibers. Mostly to do, not, not to do this kinda stuff, but just to make her shirts or yarn or whatever color. I'm not doing that yet. This one is a yellow one. And I thought for sure this would make a yellow dye. And you can tell, it didn't. It's a real pretty, kind of pinky color. So, trial and error, but this is what they look like. I'll pass this around. It's, yeah, you can see, these are the ones that I use. I only brought one of those. And then there's another really good thing, cochineal. The fuzzy white stuff on cactus with the little red beetle, I mean, little beetles inside. So that when you, does everybody know about cochineal? Okay, so it's good, although it didn't turn red for me, it turned real purple. I don't know why. And then this other dye that I'm playing with is just...
Would that work for the ammonia as well?
No, that's just water. I haven't tried the ammonia. But then this is red onion skins and it works real well. And it'll stain your countertop, your fingers, and your clothes.
What about that one, is that ammonia or is that just...
That's just water. I haven't tried ammonia in there yet. I mean, I have enough cochineal to play with. This has nothing to do with dyes, but it can clean your fibers. This is fun. This is soap berry from a soap berry tree. And I'm gonna try to use that sapinin to replicate the old paint, the ancient paint from the Lower Pecos. I've done it using yucca root. I made three replicas of painted pebbles. Let me just start it here. Y'all pass it around. These are from the, like, from the Lower Pecos. And this is that paint that lasts four to five thousand years. It's a replica of it. So it's a, they use, it's a mineral paint. They have several diff- different, um, minerals that they use. That's, um, what is it? Magnetite. But you can make red, yellow, and white, um, paint. And you mix it with, grind the powder. You use the marrow from a hoofed animal. In my case, it's marrow bones from the grocery store because I don't have access to deer or buffalo. And then you add little water and some sapinin, the soapy stuff. And you mix it up and it makes an oil paint. And it lasts a good long time. Mine is just in a hollowed-out rock that I hollowed out. And it's just sitting there, but if you add a little water to it, it reconstitutes and you can paint. So, just, Robert, what did you say I did this with? Something nice and yellow. Oh, yes, agarita. I had, Vivian gave me an agarita root, yeah. So that's a nice dye. This is oak gall dye. And this is also oak gall dye.
Is this a good dye?
Mm-hmm. You, I also have, um, at, I've got some stuff going now with green pecan hulls. You just mash them. Like, in our lower park where we live, there are pecan trees that were dropping green pecans. So I looked it up. You just smash them and stick them in water and let them sit and they make a nice dye. So...
Is that black walnut, the walnut?
Yes, I could, I have it, but for some reason, it didn't work. I mean, it wasn't good this time for some reason. And it'd been sitting for several weeks.
Were that, how old were the nuts for that?
Oh, I had go, gone and picked off last year's off of a tree on the river.
Cause, cause it's, you know, they turned dark.
Mm-hmm.
First are green and, and you turn dark, so did you use the dark ones?
Yep, because that's what I had. Let me see if I brought them. No, this is what oak galls look like, but I did not bring, I didn't bring them because I was mad it didn't work. Alright, any questions? Oh, mats, you can see the mats.
Have you ever tried using vinegar instead of ammonia?
I did try and I looked at, it wasn't doing anything, so I looked up ammonia and they said aqueous ammonia. And I looked that up and it said, you know what, you said it'll cause a bomb. So these have, these all have, um, ammonia in it. This one does not. This is just water. And this is just water. But...
Do you ever try dyeing the fabrics or do you just do like...
I've gotten it on my clothes, it doesn't come off. But it's, but no, uh-uh. And you can use yarn too, but you can look online and you just look up dyeing with plants. It's fascinating. And it's, you know, it's been done forever. And the, the purply one, which hopefully gets real purple, the, um, people in Europe use that for, you know, wealthy monarchs, they use that. So that's neat. The cochineal, this didn't work the way I wanted because it's purple and not red. But other than that, alright.
I wonder if you, on that cochineal, I wonder if you, I know each little fuzzy thing doesn't produce a lot of thread, but some. I wonder if, if you just went straight from that to the fiber?
We can try it. Let me find a fiber to do it on, cause I've got them right here. Let's see if it's, they may have dried up. This was from an enchanted rock show a couple of weeks ago. Let's try.
Did you smash them before you soaked it?
No. But I dried them. Where are the dried ones?
It's like a t-shirt?
I think they're too dry, yeah, it stains. Let me see if I can figure out what I did with that. Oh, here they are. These are the cochineal. These are dried cochineal, y'all can pass these around and look.
Is that what you're supposed to do before you add it in water?
Yeah, it, yes, and you're supposed to grind them and I didn't. And you're supposed to boil them and I didn't. But you can look it up. And I'll pass these around. These don't, I think, don't have any spines, so y'all can poke them and see what you think. Shouldn't have any spines. Shouldn't have any spines. Just be careful. Ask who drove it, who it drove crazy. Oh, I didn't bring any, oh, okay. I didn't bring them, but I'll talk about it. Because this was fibers and dyes, not. So one of the things I did when I was still making, you know, going crazy about needing to make baskets, is I made replicas of baskets called tus, T-U-S. The Apaches used them and the Navajo used them and some of the other southwestern desert people did. And it, the big one that I made is about that big around and it comes up and then it goes in and then it has a a lip and it has horsehair handles because when it was waterproof, and I'll tell you how I did it, women would carry those on their back with a cloth to hold them as they carried water, so their hands were free. The, the stuff I use to waterproof is ash juniper sap. And if you, I mean, I know a lot of people in the hill country hate ash juniper. I really like it. Because you can go and you can ask Bob and Robert when we're building trails or something, I'm always picking it off the trees. They're sticky stuff. But there are also these little golden drops that are hard. And I have about a half gallon of them in my freezer, just from driving my teammates nuts. But you can take it and you can melt it to the consistency of honey. Don't go any further than that. And it makes a really nice coating. So I waterproofed the inside and out of those tus. And they hold water. It's, it's fun. I already said that. I knew you were going to bring it up, but. But it's just, you know, it's just fun. I mean, you just look, how did people do, I'm sorry, yes, Mildred? I am, I'm a thrift store person, so I went and got, you know, some crummy pan. And you put it in it and I built a small fire and just held it over there until it got to be about the consistency of honey. In the beginning, I overheated them and they just get hard and crack. So you just want to apply it like that. And I have thrift store spoons that I smooth it with. It's just, but, and but I also have sticks that I use, like, to get it inside, like a curved stick. And I didn't think to bring them. I mean, I asked myself, do I want to bring it? There's no fibers and dyes. There's no, no dye to it. Okay, yes, Katie. No pottery. Right, no pottery at all. But a lot of those caves were really ravaged by pot hunters, which didn't find, they didn't find anything because those are not pot people. Those people were transient. They stayed there just for a little while until the resources ran out. And then they moved someplace else. They more or less followed the rains. And um. It's, at one time, that whole area was a savanna with mammoth and camels and giant horses and all kinds, buffalo, just everything. But when the climate changed, everything moved away. And so these people live on yucca root, agave root, Soto root, and what's the other ones? No, 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 yes, snacks. But what's that really horrible one that I don't? Leche guia root. That's what they would eat. But also, when we're hiking, when we were first hiking and learning to lead these hikes in the Lower Pecos, we were with one of the older guides and he said, some kind of lizard ran across in front of us. He goes, what's that? What's that called? That's what he said. And somebody said, that's a lizard. And he goes, no, that's a snack. These people ate snails, lizards, snakes, what else? Anything that they could find, they ate. Locusts and grasshoppers because in these shelter caves, there are burials, burial areas along the backside. But at the two ends are the latrines. And people are now studying the coprolites to see what these people ate all the way back then. And a lot of it is insects. And, you know, it's just, it's interesting. Yep, now what? Pass the basket. Okay, feel free to donate. Don't forget to tithe. I'm pretty sure that's oak gall. And then this is, I'll just. Are there other ones? Oh, yeah, here's one I'm not through with yet. You want me to? No, pass.
We want everything.
Oh, okay. Okay.
So Constance, are there any fibers that you've tried that were just too brittle or you just like forget it and it's not worth the effort?
On that basket, my fibers had dried out. And so all of the brown ones were cracking. And I was so angry, I just put it aside for over a year. But now I'm working on it again. So, yeah.
If you do that, do you soak the ends?
I soaked the whole basket. I just put it down in the kitchen sink and Robert just loves that. And they stay a day or two and they soften up and then you can use them. What are you saying? Yeah, you are. Let me see.
So as far as terminology with your baskets.
Uh-oh.
So. Did you call that the core when you?
Yes, these little things. Like that? This, that already passed these around. This is the coil. This is, and then you wrap it with the. This is how I start them. Yes, I do. You just add an, let me see, is that the wrap? Usually what I do before I get there is I have another one, like, real small one, that you just, you just bring this around and then you bring, and you, you know, you don't put it over something, but it's down and you wrap it, but you just.
And what happens when you, you run out of these? You just add some more?
You just keep sticking them in and go for it. You just keep poking them in. And the same for the coil. Well, they're not really fibers. You want me to talk about them? Oh, good. Yeah, it is. And cordage is really important. I mean, this, all of these, I mean, they use this for everything, the Native American people. This is, this is cattail. This is cattail. You can just pass it across the way, too. No, that's just the cattail fiber. Okay. Let me see. All right, I'll talk about these, since they fell off. I have a whole box that a friend sent me from Northern California. I haven't ever gotten to it. But I do have a pine needle basket that I bought at an estate sale when I lived outside of, in State College, Pennsylvania. And it's gorgeous. And I see how to do it. I just haven't tried. I don't think it would be that hard. I'm just, you know, right now. Maybe if we get together another time, I'll show you. Not the secret one, just the cattail itself, yeah. But it, it makes. This is Soto. Oh, that's. Oh, that's cattail. Yes. Not the secret fiber. That's just the cattail leaves. What did they use what? Sleeping on? The, this little one here, Dr. Schaefer at the Witty Museum asked me to replicate a pouch. A shaman's bag that they'd had on display, but they had to reinter it with the, the body of the shaman. So he wanted me to make another, a replica, and I could never do it. It's that weave. Oh, absolutely. You can look at anything. It's that weave, but I could never get it to do what I wanted. It's just. There was the shaman, you can look, go on the Witty website and look at the shaman's bag. You'll see a picture of it. And a hopi lady was able to replicate the pouch. I wasn't. And if you go to Seminole Canyon and you go take the Fate Bell tour, the owner of the ranch used to allow people to come on the property and for $5 a day, they could dig in the shelter caves. And they were looking for pots, but they just trashed the caves. But if you go up into Fate Bell, you will see remnants of mats sticking out of the big gaping holes that they dug. And then people slept on them. They, they used them all the time. And it's just so much mat fiber sticking out of all these horrible holes. But. I'll pass these around, too, if you all want to look. This is that over two, under two. You may. I'll move the stuff out of the way so you can see. And this is just. Yes, they did. Oh, I for, I should have said that. Did you just look it up?
No, I just assumed.
You're right. Stale urine. It was stale urine or ammonia. That's what they said to do. But I was learning about making, being able to make beer. And apparently they chewed up leche guia and made quids, threw them into a pot, added, added urine and made beer. I know, I know. No, uh-uh. Yeah, every time. But I mean, here is the beginning right there. It's tiny. And you just keep adding to the coil. These are the wraps, like this. If, like, I've run out. So what you would do is you would take another piece and you would jam it in there, I think. You just keep going. And this, you just, when you're to the point you don't want it anymore, you wrap around it and it becomes part of the coil. I would hope not, but yes, probably. See, here's a new one right here. This has just been wet and dried so many times, but this is just, there are, there are videos on the computer that show. Oh, good.
You know, so if you don't have the materials, but you want to kind of get the technique, you know, you can get these beginner kits, kind of get your technique down. And then, and then.
Then go wild.
You know, go for the, the other.
Go wild.
So I think I missed it. This is a ghanai.
A what? Yeah, no, this is, this is Tori yucca.
Okay, and then how do you treat it to make, do you just pound it?
Where's my rock? We have, around our smoker area, we have just big stumps. I laid it on here this morning and just pounded the ever-loving foo out of it. You may take this and play. I mean, you take some of it and play. And just look how to, I can show you how to start cordage.